Have your attention please, like to call the December first Womack City Council regular meeting to order, may we have roll call please?
Jonathan McKay?
Here.
Michael Snar?
Here.
Bill Learman?
Here.
Bob Osborne?
Here.
Michael Albright?
Here.
Nick Evelyn?
Here.
Matt Purkey?
Here.
Seeing everyone present, could you stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Under the presence of agenda, you have the agenda for tonight's meeting before you. What is your pleasure?
Move to be accepted as presented?
Second. Motion second by Osborne, that the agenda be accepted as presented, all in favor, signify by the same hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is accepted. You also have before you the special council meeting minutes for November seventeenth. What's your pleasure with those?
Just one item, I did enter late, so it says on their roll call, absent and present, so I didn't enter late.
So was that a change or what were you saying?
Yeah, I just requested change, you know, I did enter late, I think I got here first at six o'clock. Just got Bill Learman absent and present.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at that. Any other questions or if not, under any motion?
Move to be accepted as amended?
Second. Motion by Purkey, second by Albrecht, that the special council meeting minutes be accepted as amended, all in favor, signify by the same hand.
Aye.
If opposed, minutes are accepted. You have before you also the regular council meeting minutes of November seventeenth. What is your pleasure?
Move to be accepted as presented?
Second. Motion by Purkey, second by McKay, all in favor, signify by the same hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Regular council meeting minutes of November seventeenth are accepted. Last thing on my agenda is a notice of legislative authority and that is from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Transfer of Ownership, TRFO, from JD LLC, GBA Hidden Carry Outhead Drive Thru, nine seven five West Main Street, Wilmington, Ohio, four five one seven seven two, Laxmi, that's L-A-X-M-I, the numeral two, LLC, L-L-C, nine seven five West Main, Wilmington, Ohio, four five one seven seven. This will be on file in the office of Purkey. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Got a couple promotions to announce. Don Smith has been with the city of Wilmington for twenty-six years, has promoted to chief operator of wastewater. And Howard Alley Lunsford, known with the city for fourteen years, he's been promoted to chief operator at our water treatment plant. And then I also saw some other anniversaries that I found interesting. Both Ricky Woods, his assistant, Valen, and Mark Jones, our tax commissioner, have been with the city, you ready? Sergeant Rager has been with the city for twenty-seven. Andrea?
Fifteen.
Goes fast over there. Not fast enough. And how, Bill Howard, you mentioned Howard. Saturday, December third, from nine to four, at Denver Place School, Fortieth Home Fund Christmas Event will kick off and include forty vendors of handcrafted items, food pictures with Santa, starting at two. Our own Wilmington Air Park has been recognized as the best airport in Ohio for the third year in a row by Ohio Business Magazine and its Best in Ohio Business Awards. I also want to thank Danielle Sellers for her service on her park board, she's stepping down in the first of the year. And the last thing, I want you to keep Andy leaning over in your prayers, it was his daughter that got killed, Ashley Maynard, that got killed that time, twenty-seven years old. Just, what can you say? It's just, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Audrey Vance, do you have anything, of course?
The only thing I have is that elected officials, I put at your places, the thing about the sunshine law, that's one thing that when we're audited, that they check to make sure that during your term, that you are certified. If you have already taken those and you have those certifications, if you could be sure to get a copy of that to HR and one to me, so that we have them on file when we have the same audit this time last, next year. We weren't able to provide those to them, and so there was just a little management suggestion that I forcefully suggest to you, that you be sure that you get those done. During your term, you'll have to do them for every term. It's online, it's not painful, and it's something that's required. So, thank you very much.
That all you have?
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schottiger?
No legislation tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Council Committee reports, City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay?
We have no legislation tonight, but there has been a lot of talk with city revitalization, we just had a meeting, and we're gonna have some things coming down the pipe, so I'll keep track of that, and we're gonna, we're gonna work through some things to do with the retained hotel lodging tax money, and there's gonna be more to come on that in the coming weeks, so that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. City Services Committee, Mr. Evelyn?
No legislation, Mr. President, but we are planning a meeting for either Tuesday or Thursday next week, depending on what Andy was able to put together for us, at seven PM here in council chambers. That's all.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Mr. President, we have three items. Our first item is three readings on ordinance twenty-two sixty-one, these are additional supplemental appropriations, we had a committee meeting earlier, there's fourteen of them. Audrey Vance did an amazing job explaining what are, to supplement the document we get that kind of talks about the breakdown. A lot of the large ticket items were reverse appropriations to bring funds to kind of term, and the certificate, and it was explained well to the committee, and I think most of the council members were present, I didn't know if there are any specific questions about any of those fourteen appropriations, I think the explanation written and oral explanation was pretty sufficient, I don't know if there are other questions. Seeing none, I move to give the first reading only on ordinance twenty-two sixty-one by title only.
Second. Motion by Albright, second by Osborne, first reading ordinance twenty-two sixty-one, all in favor, signify by the same hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance twenty-two sixty-one, second reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second, for suspension of rules, may we have roll call, please?
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
All in favor, may we have second, third reading?
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to pass ordinance twenty-two sixty-one as read?
Second. Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance passes.
Our second item is three readings on ordinance twenty-two sixty-two, which is miscellaneous transfers, these are as well, things for the end of the years, and mostly pretty small financial amounts, so these are also discussed at the committee meeting, but I don't have any questions here at council, now that we're all here together. All right, seeing no specific questions about any of those transfers, I move to give the first reading only on ordinance twenty-two sixty-two by title only.
Second. Motion by Albright, second by Osborne, first reading ordinance twenty-two sixty-two, all in favor, signify by the same hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
In ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance twenty-two sixty-two, second reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second for suspension of rules, roll call, please.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries, may we have second, third reading, please?
In ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move to pass ordinance twenty-two sixty-two as read?
Second. Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance passes.
Our second item is three readings on ordinance twenty-two sixty-two, which is the budget for next year, I believe there were some very small changes on the administration list, because I briefly with the, with council, just to make sure everyone knows, maybe we all find that, or?
We talked briefly in the CRC meeting earlier about kind of pulling the lodging tax money back out, it was kind of allocated for us to where, so it's always pulled back into that line with no allocations, so. That was one of the changes, there was a few, I know Mary Kay you have a few.
The other major or minor?
They're minor, the, in the general fund, the transfer to the jump hanger, I increased that by a little bit up to forty-one thousand, just to get, have enough money to cover our obligations for that loan payment, and so then therefore, the fund one eleven, which is the, the, right below the general fund, the service payments were at thirty-four thousand dollars, and I brought that down to thirty thousand five hundred. Those all having to do with getting those two things, the, the stars aligned for those two things, to make those payments on the jump hanger, and that, so that's a few of the changes in that.
Well, I move to give the second reading only on ordinance twenty-two sixty by title only.
Second. Motion by Albright, second by Purkey, second reading only, ordinance twenty-two sixty. May we have roll call?
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. President, thank you.
And I don't think else, Mr. President, thank you.
You read it.
Oh, you have to?
Do you want to read?
Sorry, my apologies.
I want you to read.
In ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenses and other expenditures, and creating necessary funds for set appropriations of the city of Wilmington, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three as amended.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Just trying to move things along.
Sorry for that miscellaneous problem.
Anything else, councilman? Anything else, councilman?
No, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it. Should this, your committee, Mr. Purkey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, we do have one item tonight, this is ordinance twenty-two fifty-six, this is the bringing our zoning code in line for the, the permitted uses for short-term rents, area of use, or whatever, we've talked about this a lot, so I won't belabor the point, but as you can see in the ordinance, it does change, you know, two of the zoning codes to permitted use from conditional, so. Are there any questions? Like we've talked through a fair amount, so. If not, I'll move for the third reading of ordinance twenty-two fifty-six by title only.
Second. Motion by Purkey, second by McKay, third reading, ordinance twenty-two sixty, roll call, please.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Orderance twenty-two fifty-six passes.
That's all I have for this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar?
Okay, we have two resolutions tonight, both of them, I think, fairly easy, both giving permission to accept money, so that's good. First one is the H2 Ohio Grant Agreement with the Ohio EPA, has to do with lead service line inventory and mapping program, and Public Works Director, Shaker, can you say a little bit about that?
Thanks. So, according to the coordinator, Kevin, let him get the paperwork for this too, it's a hundred percent that they're paying for a GPS grid, so we have to do a lead map, this whole thing easier to use and distribute that map, and we're also going to use it for other things in the water department, so they're paying the whole cost of that, so.
How much was that grant?
Seven thousand dollars.
I couldn't hear you.
Seven thousand, around, yes.
Good job, Rick.
Any questions? All right, I move to give first reading on resolution twenty-two forty-eight by title only.
Second. Motion by Snar, second by Purkey, first reading, resolution twenty-two forty-eight, all in favor, signify by the same hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director to accept and inter institute H2 Ohio Grant Agreement from the Ohio EPA on behalf of the city of Wilmington for implementation of a lead service line inventory and mapping program, and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give resolution twenty-two forty-eight, second, third reading by title only.
Second. Motion by Snar, second by Purkey, second reading, or excuse me, suspension of rules, resolution twenty-two forty-eight, roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director to accept and inter institute an H2 Ohio Grant Agreement from the Ohio EPA on behalf of the city of Wilmington for implementation of a lead service line inventory and mapping program, and declaring an emergency.
I move to pass resolution twenty-two forty-eight.
Second. Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you, res- resolution twenty-two forty-eight passes.
Great, thank you, the next resolution is twenty-two forty-nine, has to do with accepting, authorizing acceptance of money for trench safety.
So this one is for the Bureau of Workers' Compensation, that's my assistant and host pods, the collection system supervisor, they work on this grant, so this is a new trench site, you can trench site, so when you dig a pipe up or whatever, to keep the walls of the, of the hole keeping in, it'll be a bigger one, it'll be aluminum, so it'll be lightweight, um, um, so it's your handle, so, um, this will, this will help us in that, in the past, if we had a really big project, we'd have to contract that out, we didn't have it, but you know, trench site, oh, we got the wrong one, now we'll have one here anytime, for you and the veterans to use, um, if the, the total cost of the trench site is eighteen thousand dollars, the WCO paid twelve, about twelve-five of it, so it's about two thirds, one third type grant, so.
Thank you, any questions? If anyone would like a picture of a trench, Rick sent me one on request.
That would have gone rough.
All right, if there are no questions, I move to give first reading only of resolution twenty-two forty-nine by title only.
Second. Motion by Snar, second by McKay, first reading, resolution twenty-two forty-nine, all in favor, signify by the same hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to accept grant funds from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Trench Safety Grant Program.
Thank you, I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give resolution twenty-two forty-nine, second, third reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second for suspension of rules, roll call, please.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Purkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
And Learman?
Yes.
Thank you, resolution twenty-two forty-nine carries.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any reports tonight, some missed them, we now come to the portion being so to the public, anyone that would like to address council, places, and please come forward, stand in this area, and, to three minutes or less.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, name and address.
Tony Thomas, two zero four Fisher Street, Wilmington, Ohio.
Thank you.
Over the court, a couple of times ago that I was here, I spoke to corruption and lies, I passed out to the council two examples of these lies, there was chiefs that predicted that, that were prior to our current chief. A few weeks ago, or not a few weeks ago, a few months ago, I reported something that, to an officer, that, he's a mandated reporter, mandated.
Could you stand over here, sir?
Is there, was there a reason, sir, that I need to stand right here?
They need to be able to hear what you say.
That's why I'm facing them, sir, not you.
No, we need to repeat.
So, I've already claimed my time.
And if you do not want to obey the rules, go ask me. Okay?
Can I reclaim my time now, about like forty seconds?
Sure.
So, thank you, so I, I reported this, it went on, it went on record for, for two months.
Sir, keep it civil, please, that's all I have.
Can anyone raise their hand if I've been unstill at all?
You can please.
Thank you, so, I made this report, this officer went two months, as this mandated reporter, did not make the report, and so I'm not going to mention any names at this point, because I believe there may be an ongoing investigation, I'm not real sure. So, the second thing I'm going to speak to is another officer who is working for the city right now, who where there is a forensic expert, globally known, you have a packet, you have a packet, and you have a packet, stated that our sheriff's department lied about the larger percentage of how Marvin Napier, there's no way he's dead, said he died of a heart attack, I believe you guys saw pictures, and could, could probably conclude that's not the case, the guy was beaten to a pulp. Now I've got another coroner stating that the bruise around his neck was in fact postmortem bruise, so we'll wait for that in another meeting. There was two state prosecutors, prosecutors, special investigators, that were involved in going in and, and re-investigating this. I have you know that the state has not offered one expert, not one, that, that would be the plague, the only expert is from the deceased daughter, globally known forensic expert, state the man was killed, was no accident, so you've got that, the state offered nothing, but they did get, get us two special prosecutors who we have on recording, lying several times, lying, outright lying, they called them mistakes.
You've got about.
But, but then, but then, not only did, did they lie, their special, their, their expert witness was guess who? The doctor for the defendant, who if you Googled her name, she's been going in some shady crime herself, so this is, this should concern every one of us. I need to ask you, Mr. Shaker, is there special rules to some people with last names that are just to be left alone, because I know if I was in my yard throwing a hammer...
We're not going to have a tax on...
I'm, I'm just asking, I'm asking my safety director a question.
No, it is not an ask, it's a tax.
Is there special rules that apply to some in the Ohio revise code, or is there a Wilmington revise code? I'm just curious, anything?
I don't know what you're asking.
Is there, is there special rules for some people with last names in this, in this city, that get away with stuff, it's, if you were to go to the Ohio revise code, they should be behind bars?
Sir, your time, sir.
Good to go. See you next time.
Anyone else?
He is.
Yes, sir? Name and address?
Jason Stoops, seventy Red Sugar Tree, I'm not quite Bloom as Bloom or whatever, has the land bank group, we've been following, studying, questioning the free-range individuals we have floating around town, nice way to put it, or I've come personally to see some sort of, because the land bank and our zoning department and the police roll along, we have a group of individuals that are just being kicked from empty house to empty house, here or there, whatever, the information, when they, like one of the police raid, which wasn't a hundred percent, mountain conspiracy out there, but it was shared a little bit, next time maybe we do this, we have the Red Cross beam involved, and have a tent set up with these, it's the same fifteen, twenty people, it seems to be, and maybe we can secure them at the time, and talk to them, help them, and so this, again, we, it happens every time, we just boot into the streets, they scatter like cockroaches, then the problem appears here, and it's again, it's another house destroyed, it's another house robbed, and they, there's a combination of people, there's mental health, there's drugs, I mean, yada, 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 but if we maybe we had a tent, Red Cross, National Guard, I mean, this government funded a security entry office, might make two, three, four of them wrapped up, that's ten or fifteen, only maybe we could obtain the problem some, I guess, I can't find anybody having any contact with Red Cross, get this moving, now I've come to state level, at the governors, I make that decision, the, the okay is having a...
Red tent, emergency tent?
I don't think it comes down to the Red Cross, I think what we'd probably do is get a, a multidisciplinary team in there, like a triage team, that would consist of medical, or also mental health, and all sorts of drug addiction, clinics, get them in there and have a multidisciplinary team.
Prepared and advanced, maybe instead of the last time...
It's a good suggestion.
The last time I'd be blown, I could follow up on the, that part of it, out of the fifteen to twenty there at the last house, one's already dead, and another's been hit by a car, and there's a issue with the third one, I cannot recall, I'm a veteran, I have a brain fart, but, out of that group, we've already lost one, and another hit by a car, so I cut the two, so, it's an obvious issue that when they cut loose, it's a danger, so, I don't know if another anyone even handled this situation.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Greg, Greg Pitzer, I live in, if you have any comments on the...
Thank you.
You give me a little bit, and what I like, you told me, I'd like you to tell the council what I asked you, okay? So, would you be on there, for you to start?
He has questions about the Casey Cutter investigation, what I've done is I've followed
a red tent, emergency tent.
I don't think it comes down to the Red Cross. I think what we'd probably do is get a multi-disciplinary team in there, like a triage team that would consist of medical, or also mental health, and all sorts, drug addiction, politics, get them in there and have a multi-disciplinary team.
Prepared and advanced, maybe, and said the last time.
It's a good suggestion, James.
The last time they blown, I had to follow up on the death part of it, out of the fifteen to twenty, out of the last house, one's already dead and another one hit by a car. And there's a issue with the third one, I cannot recall, I'm sorry, I have a brain fart, but out of that group, we've already lost one and another hit by cars, so that cut the two, so there's an obvious issue that when they cut loose, it's a danger. So I almost know there ain't one who can handle this situation.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Greg Pitzer, I live in, any problems on his one?
Thank you.
You give me a little bit, and what I like, you told me, I'd like you to tell the counsel. What I asked you, okay? So would you be able to, for instance?
He has questions about the Casey Pitzer investigation. What I've done is I've followed up here, and what I'm waiting on is I actually am getting the chain of custody records from BCI to the funeral home, and then record from the funeral home of what they did with Casey's possessions. I should have that here in the next week and a half. Detective McKinney is spearheading that for me. He's actually having his technician school right now at the Montgomery County. So as soon as I have that, we'll be contacting, we'll sit down and explain that to him.
Okay. Does that mean that my daughter's case is real?
Not necessarily, sir.
Not necessarily. I was told an email that the case was real, but then I was told it wasn't real. Me and others are confused, knowing if the case has been reopened or not. How could there be police activity, interviews, polygraphs, investigating going on if the case is still closed? Like said, is it real? Guys don't know. I know.
The best answer I can give you, I do know that Chief Crayman's daughter was with us. When we were going through some of his emails, we did locate that old email, probably March or April, from Asia, who is the BCI attorney. I know when he spoke with you, he would reach it, was going to reach out to her and see what it would take, if there was going to be a reason to open that up. He sent them the entire file. What they did is they went through, they looked at it, made suggestions on a couple of things that we could do, not necessarily reopen the case, but there's anything that we can tidy up a little bit on Arden. And those two suggestions where I think will, you have a copy of that letter that the attorney sent us.
Okay, so it's, it's a limbo. You're more or less, you're saying it's not reopened than.
Correction.
It's not real?
It's not real.
Okay, considering my complaints of serious accusations that involved investigators destroying key and critical evidence and sandbagging on the investigation, also considering that the interviews and potential polygraphs are accurately being conducted, also considering Riley and Waylon were later both deemed corrupt, why isn't the case real after I told you it was? Is my daughter's case tactically, tactically real? You said no. Okay?
What's the main reason why it's being closed? Can anybody? One person at a time, sir.
I'm just speaking with them. I'm the power of attorney, so.
Okay. Am I going to get a city's department review that was promised by Chief Crayman for a metaphor? If the review's going to cover and review my complaint of illegal destroyed evidence in my daughter's case by the city investigators? Had any of the investigators been questioned?
The previous investigators?
Have any of them been questioned?
I will tell you that the case went up to BCI. And BCI, that way it's a third party. We're not the ones investigating.
Okay, yes, yes.
That way there's some transparency there for you.
Well, that's the way, that's the way I like it, and that's good.
Yeah, we sit down at the BCI, and if BCI considers it and tells us to reopen it, okay, we are following the direction of BCI.
Okay, thank you very much.
It sounds like things are moving forward for you.
Yeah, that's what I like to hear.
And we, we are very concerned about your situation.
Well, it was a big.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, everybody in this town, that's what happened to my daughter that night, except for cops at charge, and the mayor. They're all involved in it.
Did you have anything else?
Well, mainly is, if everything's going back to BCI, basically, that's answering my question here. Are you separate the rope in the milk crate? Is it still out upon?
Once again, I don't know.
That, from what BCI is, from what I understand is, that was an assumption by one of the divers when they went out there with the sodar. So we don't know if that's particular, we did, we did not know a hundred percent if it's a milk crate, we don't know to a hundred percent if it was a rope. That was an assumption by one person.
Right.
It was on the sodar.
It was on the sodar, yeah, I got a picture of sodar.
Yeah, we did.
Sure looks like it. Well, why would a crate get that close to her pot and on that side of the lake?
That's on. So again, would it have seen that? Do their foreo, forefile force.
Yeah, it was watered and climbed a five-foot fence, and she's five foot and tall, drunk, took her boots off and jumped in the lake. Does that make sense?
I understand your first reading. All right.
Let's, let's BCI, let's say his name.
Right.
Yes, sir.
My name's Darrell Petrie. Also, I'll start with a question of you, Mr. President. Does your business sell office products, furnitures, PVEs up in the city?
No.
No? Does not?
No, we're not allowed to.
You wouldn't think so, would you? Okay. Mr. Campbell, the asphalt grindings, was it as I said, stores locked, did you get those from the city?
Above Fillmore Construction.
Fillmore Construction, was it, was it the road grindings?
I have an idea where they came from.
Okay.
They came from this recycling center, one across that.
Okay, okay. So I know you said you reached out to BCI chief. The fact is, we've reached out to BCI too about the sex scandal that took place in 2019, and we've actually caught BCI in several lies, so they've actually tried to aid in the cover-up of the sex scandal of 2019. And Mr. Mayor, we've looked into all this, and the witnesses are saying, hey, that's what BCI put in their reports does not what the sex victims said. And the, let me go ahead and read exactly what was said here. This is from one of the witnesses. Says, "All aid of us were forced to perform sex acts or we'll lose our job. We feel dirty, gross, embarrassed, and humiliated." And nobody ever heard about that. And then also, she said, one of the victims of the sex scandal, "They offered me to come back to work with a huge pay increase." They offered, no wonder what they is. "They offered me to come back to a huge pay increase, car supervisor position. Initially, they invited me back prior to the suit and asked me not to have sex with anyone. I rolled like a baby." So she was treated like she was the problem, as well was. Now, counsel, I know this, I know that I was told by Mr. Wright here that you guys thoroughly reviewed Donna Kern's death.
I never said that.
Yeah, you did.
I said they were aware of it.
Thoroughly, like in, okay.
Never mind.
Let's just go right to it here. Okay. What my point is, is why isn't Casey Pitzer's case being thoroughly reviewed by you guys in Martin Daniels? You guys don't want nothing to do with that, but you guys are thoroughly being briefed on Donna Kern's case. So there's three deaths, but you're only willing to look at one of them?
God, they can't speak to you.
What I'm going to say is that we all need to get together and have a little powwow. And Mr. Mayor, I've come to you with several different kinds of things, and you haven't replied to me one time. I mean, it's going to look really terrible on your next upcoming campaign. I mean, I don't see a chance, I don't see any possible way that you can get re-elected with the scandals and things that's been on your watch. You literally took the guy that was operating the police department, the sex scandal, and put him as the head of probation overseeing hookers and drug addicts.
I think you're done.
Well, you know, that's, that's not a very good decision. Do you think they're outholding any integrity over the probation department, or you think they're strong?
Have a seat. Thank you. Anyone else?
Nobody's got any answers for me on that one?
I can answer that, it's not under his purview at all.
But thoroughly looking over Donna Kern's case is.
But then, you talk about that last thing where you accused him of having converted to a probationary all of a sudden under his purview, he has no.
Dwayne Waylon didn't get transferred over to.
Will you give my answer, please?
He works at the Clinton Kelly Courts, or the Clinton Kelly Common Peace jurisdiction. The mayor has absolutely no authority.
Okay, well, I made a mistake. That's one, one mistake being hundred on the city.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to clarify.
Two to a hundred still.
Why, like I said, the grindings free.
I didn't say free, I said where did you get them? Go back, you got a videotape. We all just need to sit down and have a big powwow, look at all the evidence of what we need to do. Because you guys make the executive decision on the city, the public depends on you guys. Do you guys, you guys ever see legislation? Your legislation, what happens when the legislation isn't being upheld? Why not? Like you're cutting the checks at these people that aren't doing their jobs.
That's enough. I ask you to stop, please.
Of course you will. Okay, yeah, of course.
Y'all can leave.
Oh, I am on that note.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You love kind of furniture sales.
Six hundred thousand, all of the paper too. You are, you seem at all, you said you should have heard, you ain't done nothing. That's more. Darrell, go.
Can that gentleman be banned from future meetings?
No, I would request that they not be admitted yet. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Yeah, all the way or though? I forgot to brag on in. And the great job her crew did cleaning up her housing, that's one of the damn downtown here. I can't believe I forgot it.
You know, I appreciate you, I would say, lately.
Does good job.
But I just don't understand, I'm looking here at case number sixteen oh five nine oh eight, four ninety eighth Rome Street. Owner of record is deceased in this case, has been open for two thousand and forty-three days. That's five and a half years. Why does it take five and a half years to deal with a crime? I just don't understand. There's no, two and a half, three. What's?
I mean, technically, it should be, I mean, at that long unless it's continuance based on the defense, the defendant actually asking for continuances, try to continue to improve. I don't know specifically about that one, but I'd be glad to talk to you about it. No, that sounds like a lot of time, but you could not have that amount of time if it was based on prosecutions, continuances, like a speed trial or that type of thing. So my assumption is, or rightly it's been lost, I'll get to it, but can you message, email me the specifics, I'll do that.
I'll be glad to. Thank you, sir.
Can I say something more?
Sure.
Please, thank you. Jamie Knowles, five five zero, Worth Boulevard, said, "A question, not sure who is supposed to be following up or who does this, but I've noticed that some of the condemned homes that are boarded up are now partially unboarded, have been for at least two to three weeks. Like example, the house down by the old pet feed mill, there is a board off of that window has been for three weeks. I pass it twice a day. It's weird because the board moves a little bit from time to time, it appears. So not sure if somebody's back in that home, not back in the home, whatever. And then the other, the other one's the old realtor office right downtown, kind of catty corner from Buckley's there on the corner that looked like somebody ripped a board off, broken a window, it was in. I did notice that the police department was down there investigating, but it's never been re-boarded up. They cleaned the glass out of the window. Last night when I went by, was pretty sure that there was somebody standing in that front room by the window, but I went back, turned around, you know, had to go around block. Couldn't tell whether it really was or not, so I did make my call to the police department because I didn't want to, want them to go down for no reason at all, but I couldn't verify that somebody had been in the house. So it just, I don't know, I'm just not sure who's supposed to follow up on those once they're, once they've been condemned and boarded up.
It's hard to find.
Okay. And I wasn't sure, I'm not trying to point fingers.
Lincoln and Main, is that where you're talking about?
Yes.
We talked to.
Both Lincoln.
And then the other one, are you talking about the master feed mill?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, Monmouth.
Yeah, oh, Monmouth. It's the, it's the last house before you get to the mill. It's the house on the porch, facing towards Truce House Street. Exactly. I can't say that somebody's back in there, but it just, it looks like that board moves from time to time. I don't want somebody to get hurt. My fear is somebody's going to get hurt trying to climb in and climb back out of the window, you know, whatever. And that's, anyway.
Don't hesitate to call our agency.
And I usually don't, I just.
You're not wasting our time.
Okay.
That's what we get paid to do. I mean, call us.
I know, but still, when I can't verify, it's like, sure not.
But if it's verified or not, call us.
Okay.
It's a concern. If you have a concern, we need to be checking that out.
Well, the last, one of the last times I called, and it was actually on, was it one fourteen East Locust, the blue house that, that was broken into again after it was condemned? When I called and said, "Look, the, the board has been removed, the cement blocks are away", I said, the first question I got, "When did you see anybody crawl in?" And I said, "No, I didn't, but there's obviously somebody in there. It's five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, it's dark. I'm going to say there's somebody in the house that time."
Regardless, it's important, nobody's supposed to be in there.
Okay.
Except for human habitation, we have the right to check and make sure it's still underway.
Okay, okay, I just, like I say, I just, anyway, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. President, I've got something.
Yes, sir.
I had an incident on Tuesday night where I needed to call the police, and they came three, four minutes later to help me out, raced very quickly and very professionally,